Former state senator and OHA trustee Clayton Hee dropped out of the Democratic primary for governor and instead is trying to get his old senate job back from incumbent Gil Riviere. The face-off is a winner-take-all contest for Senate District 23, covering Windward, Oahu, and the North Shore. Also on tap, the race for Honolulu City Council District 6, from Makiki to Moanalua. Incumbent Carol Fukunaga faces three challengers: Tyler Dos Santos Tam, Ikaika Hasi, and Zach Stoddard. Tonight's live broadcast and livestream of Insights on PBS Hawaii start now.
Aloha and welcome to Insights on PBS Hawaii. I'm Yenji Denise. Tonight, we're doing a doubleheader featuring candidates for two different offices: District 23 of the Hawaii State Senate and District 6 for the Honolulu City Council. In both cases, these two races could be decided in the primary election. For Senate District 23, the only two candidates running are both Democrats: incumbent Gil Riviere and challenger Clayton Hee. For Honolulu City Council District 6, a nonpartisan race, if one candidate receives more than 50% of the vote, she or he will automatically be elected without having to have a runoff in the general election. Our first half hour will feature the two Democratic candidates for Senate District 23. After a quick change, we will have the four candidates for the city council seat at the table with us. We look forward to your participation in tonight's show. You can email, call, or tweet your questions, and you'll find a livestream of this program at PBSHawaii.org and on the PBS Hawaii Facebook page. We want to acknowledge our volunteers who will be taking your questions tonight. There you see a live shot of them eagerly awaiting your input to tonight's show, and now to our guests. They are both Democrats, running for the Senate District 23, which covers Kaneohe to the North Shore and inland to Waihua, Schofield Barracks, and Kuniia. Running for reelection is Senator Gil Riviere. He was first elected to the State House in 2012 as a Republican, where he served one term. He was elected to the State Senate in 2014 as a Democrat. He's a mortgage loan officer and lives in Waialua. Our next guest is former Senator Clayton Hee, who held this very seat from 2004 to 2014. He was first elected to office in 1982, holding different seats in the State House of Representatives, the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, and the Senate. He is currently a farmer and consultant, living in Ahui Manu Valley. Gentlemen, welcome tonight. This is such an interesting district, as we saw from that map there. You know, you have such a diversity of needs and interests. On the one hand, you have folks who want to keep the country country; on the other, you do have a district that's very reliant on tourism, visitors, and wanting to expand housing. So how do you balance those two needs? As the incumbent, we'll start with you.
Well, the strains that we're feeling with the overwhelm of tourism are really, really remarkable, and people are feeling it. And for the last several years, I've been advocating to Hawaii Tourism Authority that they need to take some responsibility for the visitors that they're bringing and the impacts. You know, the parks are overloaded, trails are overloaded, people are getting into trouble hiking in the ocean and such. And HTA has been on the mantra that more is better, more is better, more is better. And for the last few years, I've been pushing them to take some responsibility and help mitigate the impacts of that maximum quick increase of tourism. So in the last year, we've been able to really push back and get them to be more responsible, and also to change the focus to adding more money to Department of Land and Natural Resources. So that's one important element of this tourism explosion.
What do you feel about that in the district? The balance between keeping the country country and wanting to, you know, bring more dollars in?
I think the difficulty with the district is the physical nature of the district. It's predominantly a two-lane highway. So anytime you have tourists on the road, and Polynesian Cultural Center has a show virtually every night, it impacts the communities. And with more tourists coming, sometimes a million a month, that impacts the two-lane highway. And what exacerbates that is that when it's king tides or when it's stormy weather, there are parts of that district, Waikene in particular, Ka'ava is another area, where the highway is impacted by Mother Nature. So, you know, looking forward, the big challenge of the district will be global warming and sea level rise that will accelerate and exacerbate particularly during the wintertime and during storms that impact the highway and impact the shoreline.
We can't necessarily stop climate change or Mother Nature. How do you propose, you know, the immediate problem that you brought up with that road?
Well, Department of Transportation did a study, and they said that there's 38 coastal miles statewide. And to either relocate or elevate, they estimated the cost would be $15 billion in $2018. It's interesting, because my own belief is the cost of rail will be about $15 billion. So if there needed to be a make-work project, elevating or relocating coastal highways makes much more sense than a rail system that will probably triple taxpayers' commitment by the end of the day.
What's your take on that? I mean, with that particular road, we are looking, as you said, to king tides and other coastal erosion issues. What can be done right now, short of perhaps an elevated highway? I don't know that we have $15 billion to spend on something like that.
One of the problems is the Department of Transportation has not been very efficient at getting their projects done. For the last couple of decades, they've allotted millions of dollars for shoreline preservation in Ha'ula, Ka'ava, Punalu'u, and these areas that are immediately impacted. In the last couple of years, they spent four and a half, no, they spent nearly $5 million of emergency funds in Ka'ava to shore up the road. They're not working proactively enough to do the mitigation of the highway, just to sustain it, let alone the long-range visioning. But Yenji, I want to add back on that keeping the country country question. There is a controversy regarding whether or not some additional housing should be permitted in the Ma'la'i Kahana area in between La'ee and Kahuku. And it's very controversial, because every community outside of La'ee is opposed to that, yet it keeps moving forward. And just the other day, the city council moved out of committee a measure to allow a couple hundred houses on this land. And they're coming up with fancy words to say it's not Ma'la'i Kahana, but there is an expansion going on. And I have personally been testifying at the city council in opposition to that expansion in representing, you know, the rest of the community. So it's a hot potato.
You know, on the issue of housing illegal, vacation rentals are everywhere, especially in your district. If you look at the Kailua area and throughout the North Shore, that's being blamed for the lack of rental units. Is there a way that the legislature can address this problem? I mean, why haven't they already?
Well, the legislature, one thing, that's a great question, because the vacation rentals are a real problem. They're taking up as much as 15% or 20% of the housing stock in certain parts of the district. So I've been very, very vocal on that, and proud to say that, working with Senator Thielen and some of the other members of the Senate, we changed the conversation from Airbnb's version of collecting the taxes and passing them through to the state without any questions asked. We've changed the conversation so that now the Senate position is, okay Airbnb, we'll allow you to pass through the taxes provided you provide reports to the Department of Taxation and to the local accounting authorities, so that we can get some control over this proliferation. And so that's from the state level, a good way to help the counties get enforcement.
I mean, you mentioned that in what's up to us.
I think vacation rentals should be placed at a higher tax bracket and make it onerous on the owners of vacation rentals, particularly the offshore owners, because the vacation rentals serve no purpose in terms of the local people. And when it's profit motivated, they should be set at a higher tax bracket to incentivize the tax collection and disincentivize the foreign ownership of valuable vacation rental spaces on the island, particularly in the district, on the North Shore in particular.
And how would you propose enforcing something like that?
You would enforce them through the Department of Taxation. I mean, it's pretty simple. It's pretty straightforward in enforcing taxes.
Tell us, you know, one of the things that people are struggling with throughout the state, but particularly in your communities, is affordable housing. Local folks struggling to find things that they can actually buy. How can we help the next generation actually afford a house?
Well, my own view is the best affordable housing developer today in Hawaii is the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. And it's primarily because the Department of Hawaiian Homelands is responsible for building in the infrastructure, making the house affordable. So using that model, I believe, to make affordable housing available and truly affordable, the state needs to become involved with the private developer and share the cost of the infrastructure, on the condition that the affordable housing unit is truly affordable. I know of, for example, an energy-efficient unit in Waimeanalo, recently built, recently meaning in the last five years, three-bedroom, two-bath, up and down, PV, solar. Mortgage is $1,000. And she has two generations in that particular house. There's one in Kapole, four-bedroom, three-bath, is $1,200. Now, developers cannot do that because of the infrastructure costs and other issues, but Department of Hawaiian Homelands has done it. And so that is a model that should be emulated, but the state needs to have skin in the game. But it also needs to hold their feet, the developers' feet to the fire, so that affordable housing, that term affordable housing, is truly affordable.
What's your take on affordable housing?
In the last couple of years, we've been talking at the legislature about micro units, creating small units, such as they have in many parts of the world. Crowded communities, crowded expensive places in Asia in particular have small living units, and people live quite, you know, quite fine. So I think part of it has to be a paradigm shift as to what people are expecting to live in. I think that not everybody's going to be able to have two acres, or one acre, or 5,000 square feet. So maybe in addition to townhouses, we need more micro units, maybe, you know, they used to have boarding houses for people who really couldn't afford, you know, real affordable things. So I think we need a greater variety of housing styles and more consideration on developing those in areas where they can be accommodated.
Of course, what makes our show different than other candidate forums that you've seen is that you, the audience, get to participate. We have some audience participation, and we want to encourage you to keep calling our volunteers. This one is for Clayton Hee from Claire in Ka'ava. She says, "Gil Riviere has shown he advocates for a dedicated percentage of the state budget being used for education rather than raising property taxes." Where do you stand on this?
You could advocate, I'm a public school teacher, and there's no question that, in my mind, that part of the issues dealing with schoolteachers is their salary, is recruitment, it has to do with incentivizing people to be schoolteachers. I'm a product of workforce development housing. I lived, when I was a schoolteacher on Molokai, I lived in a teacher's cottage provided by the state. In essence, that's workforce development housing. As long as I was a teacher, I was welcome to live there. When I stopped teaching, the housing was no longer available, and it reverted back to the state. There is an issue that I think can help schoolteachers, and that's providing workforce development housing for the Department of Education, whether it's provided by private entities or if the Department of Education through the state looks at providing housing to incentivize teachers, like I was incentivized when I first moved to Molokai, with the opportunity to not only teach on a great island, but also be able to live in a teacher's cottage.
You know, on that subject of education, there is a proposal now to change the state constitution to allow the state to tax investment properties to fund public schools. Is that a measure that you support?
You might have noticed I was the only member in the legislature to vote against that. The vote was 24 to 1 in the Senate, and it was 50 to 0 in support. I am very concerned about giving the state an additional taxing authority. And even if the best of intentions are followed out for the next couple of years, and only those rich offshore investors are taxed, first, there's a question of will that generate enough funds for the department as they envision? Secondly, once you create a taxing authority, history has shown that we will tax. So if we can tax investor properties, we will ultimately be taxing every investment property. And that means the people who can least afford the cost, the renters, are going to end up paying as much as $300 or $400 more a month to pay those property taxes, because the investor's not going to pay it. The owner, he's going to pass that on in the cost of rent. Small businesses, industrial properties, hotels, commercial properties, all of those are investment properties. So I see this as a backdoor way to just hugely expand the tax base for our state government.
But clearly, we need to pay teachers more. How do we do that?
So several, I think eight years ago, the budget was approximately $10 billion. And we paid a certain amount for education, which is $2 to $3 billion, depending on how you count it. Now, the budget has grown from $10 billion to $14 billion, but education funding has not increased. So if we are serious about prioritizing that education, I'm saying, let's make it that priority, and let's put at least 25% of the entire budget towards education. If that's the priority that we're seeking, let's do that. And then as the budget grows, we can maintain that educational level without putting that undue burden on the people who rent their homes.
What's your take?
If I was in the Senate, I would have made the vote 25 to 0, because what Gil is presuming is that he knows best for everybody else. The vote is to allow people to make a choice, to put it on the ballot, and allow people to study the issue and then make a choice. That's the essence of a question before the, to amend the constitution. And Gil's vote preempted the opportunity, if his side had prevailed, would have preempted the public from making that choice.
But what's your take on the measure itself?
The measure itself? Like I said earlier, you cannot make money out of thin air. It has to come from somewhere. And as far as I'm concerned, if the tax base is to be raised, it should be borne on the backs of investment properties, and particularly if they're offshore owners. You know, I felt that way about the rail. And when I campaigned, I said that the lottery is an alternative to raising funds to pay for rail. The lottery is an alternative to raising funds to pay for teachers. You know, I said that loud and clear, and I think that those are alternatives to paying as opposed to having local people pay for more taxes.
See, the problem is, the question says, shall the state be authorized to tax investment property to pay for education? Sounds nice. What's not in place there is the context and the actual ramifications. If we look at the transient accommodation tax, the hotel tax, that was originally created for very specific purposes in Waikiki. And then it got used to be funding for counties, for the state. Now, the TAT is used to pay for rail. Neighbor islanders are paying for the rail through the TAT. Conveyance taxes expanded the same way. It was originally to pay for the Bureau of Convances. And now, it's become a big slush fund. So my point is, we have to be very, very careful. And I don't think that it's a good idea, and therefore, I would be opposed to that. And that's why I'm speaking so clearly about it. Most of the other politicians will say, let the people decide. That seems awfully convenient to me, to pass it on to them. We have a representative government. We're the guys that are supposed to be taking the tough calls and making the tough decisions. And passing it on to the public in that case, I think, is, you know, it's fine. Let's have the question, but I would recommend a no vote on it.
You know, both of you have talked about the stress of having so many visitors. We're approaching 10 million this year. We have Alma from Kailua saying, "Given that tourism is about to be maxed out, what do you think about reducing the state funding to the tourism industry?" Let's start with you on that.
I put in a bill last year, because for 10 years, I've been asking Hawaii Tourism Authority, what is the optimal number of visitors? And back then, it was 6.5 million. And they said, well, about the same amount. Then it was 7 million, 8 million, 9 million. So last year, I put in a bill that says, because HTA, you won't identify the impacts, you won't admit the impacts, you won't identify the maximum number that you want, the state legislature's going to identify that. And the bill said, when you reach 9 million visitors, we will then declare victory and move 15% of HTA's budget to the Department of Land and Natural Resources to pay for parks, trails, and beaches. It was a popular bill that actually passed out of three committees this year, because people are now getting it, as I've been talking for the last four years, about this very impact. They're getting it, that Hawaii Tourism Authority needs to be held accountable, and maybe their budget is too much. I think it is. It's been on par with the Department of Land and Natural Resources, who have such a giant kuli'ana for the state, and 1% of the state budget for all the chores of maintaining our lands, conservation lands, and such. It's unacceptable. We need to reappropriate more funds from tourism to managing our lands.
Are we spending too much state money on tourism?
1985, I voted for the tourist tax. So I was very familiar back then with the people who are opposed to even instituting a tax. The problem to me is that the answer is yes, the TAT, there's too much of the TAT going to the HTA, no question about that. But, you know, if you're in office, then you bear the responsibility of the product that you produce. That's what you do in office. So complaining about what's wrong, particularly Gil sits on Ways and Means, that's a powerful committee. And if you can't get your way on Ways and Means, then maybe your effectiveness needs to be looked at to get your position across.
So my response to that, Yenji, is that when I came in, the budget for Department of Land and Natural Resources was $124 million. This year, it's $161 million. That has been my, because of our district, because we have a rural district with all the bays and beaches and conservation lands, that has been my top priority. And the budgets, and if you ask anybody in DLR and all the divisions, I'm their number one fan, moving the dial in the right direction for them.
That's the equivalent of 1% of the budget. So I wouldn't be bragging about that.
Well, let me ask you this. Four years ago, you announced you were running for lieutenant governor. You endorsed Gil Riviere for this very seat. Now, you're running against him. What's changed in that time?
I was disappointed in some of the things he did. And I told him that. He was walking up my driveway one day, and I told him that I had been thinking about running for the Senate. And he asked me, how come? And I said, well, I'm disappointed in some of the things you've done. And one of the things in particular is, in 2008, the state, under Laura Thielen, as DLR Director, set out and moved to evict six families in Kahana. At the time, I was a member of the Senate, and I went in that valley, and we fought. And the upshot of it is, the six families are still there. In 2017, I got a call when I was working up in my pasture from one of the members of the six, and I could tell she was upset. So I said, hey, you know, Lena, what's wrong? And she said, you got to see this resolution. You know, Senator Riviere is having meetings in his office, and we're afraid we're going to be moved out. And I said, no, I cannot be, because the land board, through a law in 2009, made a decision to issue leases, which they're derelict in issuing even today. And so I went to the meeting, and I called actually a mutual friend of ours, Denis Santolini. And she told me that she had texted Gil, and they had a conversation. He'd be at the meeting, and he was going to say two things. "I'm sorry," and "I made a mistake." What he said at the meeting was, "I didn't read the resolution when I signed it."
That's not true.
Well, that's what she said.
No, he did not.
And one of the guys, in fact, just last week, he said, well, you know, he didn't read it. I said, well, that's not an excuse. I said, that's dereliction to what you're doing. But the issue of having these meetings without having the six families at least on notice that, hey, you know, you guys ought to come. I'm going to have a meeting that DLR, because I called Mike Gebert. I said, Mike, what are you doing? And he said, well, you know, DLR wants to revisit this park study. So I said, you know, the people are upset, and there's families involved. So I was very upset about that. And I told Denis Santolini, I said, this is a bright line in the sand for me. The days of moving local people, particularly Hawaiians, off of their ancestral lands because the state wants to move them out are over.
Well, I heard you say that's not true. So what is true?
He can make claims and say things that I've said, but I disagree. He's putting words in my mouth that were not spoken.
I was there, Gil.
As was I.
Yeah. So you know what you said.
So there is, there is an ongoing problem with the housing and the management of the park. Kahana has a lot of troubles, and there's a lot of unresolved matters. Senator was there before me, and the matters have not been resolved. And as a matter of fact, I had a meeting with three of the community leaders just yesterday in Kahana to work out a way forward. Because one of the things is, you've got these competing interests. You've got parks trying to get out of it, you've got the six, you've got the other 28 who have the leases, you've got the environmental issues. So it's a complicated issue. So I was asked to introduce the resolution. I did read it. I would have never said I didn't read it.
You shouldn't have said you didn't read it.
So I put it in, and it blew up. And I immediately realized, okay, this is not going to spark a conversation, this is going to create a shouting match. So based on that, I withheld the resolution. There were still members in the legislature that wanted to push it, and I held it back. I respected the request of the six, and I said, let's table this and try to go back at it, because I always work cohesively and with respect for people. I'm not bombastic. I don't come in and claim things. So I work for a solution.
I know you both feel that you have the interest of the district in your heart. I'd love it if you would ask each other a question. We're almost out of time, so we have a little bit of time left in the few minutes. What do you want voters to hear from former Senator Hee? And then we'll give you a chance to ask him a question as well.
So my question would be, if your heart is in being in the Senate, why have you been at no community meetings for the last several years? You've been absolutely missing in action. You haven't been in any community meetings. You were running for governor, and at the last minute, you said you can't afford, essentially to buy the governor's race, you can't afford to compete for that, so you're going to switch gears. So I'm challenging your sincerity, and I'll point out that last night, I was at Kahalu Neighborhood Board meeting, which I go to every month, till 10:30. And he was doing a fundraiser for $500 a plate. So you're running around doing fundraisers, you're not going to community meetings. Where have you been?
I think if you ask people, they know that I've been throughout the community. You ought to know that the Kahana people, I've been meeting with them regularly. And they're the ones that told me, and so I was there, that you didn't read the reso. In fact, Darrell Solivan, at the 94th anniversary of the Ko'ulau Loa Hawaiian Civic Club at Ha'ula, which you weren't there, and I was there, Darrell told me outside, he said, hey, how come the guy didn't read the reso? And I said, nah, he read the reso. He just said he didn't read the reso. So because I'm not at the community meetings that you might be, doesn't mean I don't go to community meetings. After all...
Neighborhood board meetings, community association meetings, I never see you. Nobody ever sees you. You're not there.
Well, that presumes that those are the only meetings in the district. And that's not true, Gil. And, you know, I've been to neighborhood board meetings, you were not there. But I don't play gotcha. That's not what I do.
Well, what's your question for him tonight?
My question for him is, for a guy who is a pro advocate of food security, for a guy who has issued the problems of state government, as a member of Ways and Means, defend the position that the Department of Ag for Food Security has received less than 1% of the budget. You sit on Ways and Means. I've heard you say, well, I'm in the minority, in the majority, I can't get things done. The question is, in the six years you've been a member of the legislature, you passed two bills as the primary author. One had to do with corpses, and the other one had to do with...
One was wine and burials, and one was abandoning animals, yeah.
The two. For an average, I guess, of six into two, less than one-third of a bill per year you've been in office. On the other hand, I've been fortunate enough to move 136 bills in the 16 years I've been in office, eight and a half bills a year. So how is it that you're so effective as a member of Ways and Means, unable to solve the issues that you've been complaining about this evening?
I'm glad you asked that. I'm not, I haven't been in government for 40 years, or four decades, or however long you've been, in and out of government. or however long you've been, in and out of government. So you are, I give you credit.
Twenty-eight years.
You are the career politician. And so you have been there.
And a farmer.
Yep. Career politician.
And a farmer.
And a farmer. I'll give you that.
Okay.
So you've been there. You've been there a lot longer than I have. I find that there's an equal value in blocking bad ideas. And as I mentioned, the Airbnb bill was terrible. I think community service and constituent concerns is hugely important. I think having a metric that says, "Oh, I passed a lot of bills," there's no context to that. There's no, where's the service? Where, where were you on the issues of, like Kahana issue, for example, the development there? Where are you on the community issues such as the Scott Wallace Development or the wetlands in Ha'ia? So I'm spending my time out in the community advocating for the people, for the issues that are affecting them on a day-to-day basis. I'm not just sitting up in the high horse, you know, Imperial Palace, saying that I'm a senator and I pass all these bills. I give you that. But I don't think that is the one standard by which somebody should be measured. They should be standard, whether or not you've done a good job is whether or not the people--
Well, there you go.
Appreciate your work. And we will see in 30 days.
Passing a bill like the minimum wage bill from 710 to 1025 affects everybody, Gil. That's your job as a legislator. To raise the minimum wage is very difficult. You need to be effective. You need to work with people. But if you're gonna be out in the--
Work with people. That's a funny thing.
How do you pass bills without working with people?
I am the most cooperative and cohesive person that's a problem solver.
Your record doesn't indicate that. But there you go again.
Let's end on a positive note here. I'll just ask one final question to each of you if you could take about a minute to answer it. What is the thing in the district that you love about and what is the biggest threat to that? How do you propose working in the ledge to preserve what you love about where you are?
What I love is the, it's the community and the rural nature of the communities. The agricultural lands are conservation lands, are bays. It's the way of life that we experience. We are, as we started this conversation, feeling the strains of maximum visitor overload. And so that's gotta be addressed. We've got inadequate infrastructure. The Department of Transportation does not do as good a job as they should be. And basically, I think the Senator needs to be welcoming to everybody. Shouldn't be dismissive. Shouldn't be bombastic or arrogant when they come in and he disagrees with them. I think the Senator has to be there for the people and be in the community and be active and be a good listener and really have the heart and soul for everybody in the district, not just the select friends.
What do you love about where you live and how do you propose preserving that if you get to go back to the legislature?
Well, what I love about the district are the people, the residents of the district. They're, they're dynamic people. They are strong-minded people. They're local people. They're people that move to Hawaii. They all wanna contribute. They're unafraid to call you. They're unafraid to share their views. And, you know, I just enjoy the people. I was born and raised in the Winnetonka side. So a lot of the district I grew up in, a lot of the areas of my, my life has been spent on the ranches on the area. So I really like the people. That, to me, is the number one asset of the district. And working with them is just a real pleasure for me.
Okay. Well, thank you both. And mahalo for you, to you for joining us for this portion of Insights. We thank our guests, Senator Gil Rivera and former Senator Clayton He. We're gonna do a quick change. We'll return in just a few minutes to hear from the candidates for Honolulu City Council District Six. Please enjoy this Hiki No story by Roosevelt High School students. Stay right here. We'll be right back.
Over 70 years ago, after the attack on Pearl Harbor, the Japanese-Americans confronted an untrusting nation. In 1943, the 442nd 100th Battalion Combat Regimental Team, the first ever all Japanese-American military unit, was formed. Tetsu Kiyama, one of the few remaining Nisei veterans from the 442nd, shares his experience of the price of equality.
There was a price to pay. You know, blood was shed, lives were lost. And all that is because, you know, the motivation is we've gotta prove our loyalty.
Through his service in the military, Mr. Kiyama envisioned the country where all races come together.
The lesson is that, well, you know, you've heard the phrase, "Americanism is not a matter of race, color, ancestry. Americanism is a matter of mind, the heart, and the spirit."
The hard work and success of the 442nd made it possible for more Japanese-Americans to advance in the U.S. society.
General Shinseki, you know, he became the first Japanese-American to be chief, Army Chief of Staff, the number-one position in the U.S. Army. And he always says, "You know, I got here. I'm standing on the shoulders of those Nisei soldiers." So he, he knows that somebody else sacrificed, somebody else worked hard.
To this day, the work and the values of the 442nd still live in the hearts and the minds of the American people. Major Kimura of Roosevelt High School is a senior instructor of the JROTC program and a firm supporter of the values of the 442nd.
That working together and that focus and that discipline drove them to accomplish a lot of things that other units that didn't have that type of adversity, to bind them together. It's just fantastic what they were able to accomplish in that very, very intense situation, time, time period of our history.
Major Kimura uses the values and lessons of the 442nd to teach his cadets the importance of cooperation.
Bringing to the ROTC program is team building, team bonding, working as a team. One person is not more important than the other. It's the whole team concept. And of course, a lot of the indoctrination. And I guess Douglas Pata said it the best way, "Duty, honor, country." And then we put it here, "Duty, honor, country, and Roosevelt." And the last thing I want to emphasize is that each one of us has strong points. And sometimes we need some help in some areas. But if we're working together, that's, that's the ideal situation. And that's what we want to do with our program here at Roosevelt.
From a soldier with a cause to an army instructor to the future leaders of our nation, the legacy of the 442nd lives on. This is Abigail Lipani from Roosevelt High School, reporting for Hiki No.
Aloha. Welcome back for the second half of our Insights Forum, featuring the four candidates running for the sixth city council district of Honolulu. District Six includes portions of Makiki, downtown Honolulu, Punch Bowl, Pa'oua Valley, New O'wano, Aleva Heights, Papakolea, Fort Shafter, Moanalua, Halava, Kalih Valley, and portions of Liliha and Kalih. Please continue to email, call, or tweet your questions. And you'll find a live stream of this program right now at pbsHawaii.org and on the PBS Hawaii Facebook page. Our phone volunteers are sticking with us tonight till 9:30, so please keep them busy. Now to our guest. Our first guest is incumbent Carol Fukunaga, a veteran lawmaker who was first elected to office in 1978. She's running for a second four-year term on the city council. She graduated from Roosevelt High School, which is in District Six, and has a law degree from UH Maunaua. Our second guest and candidate for office is Tyler Dos Santos Tam. He is a Punahou School and Yale University graduate and is the executive director of the Hawaii Construction Alliance. Ikaihahasi is our next candidate. He is the president and founder of Summit Magazine. He's an Iolani school graduate and has a master's in political science from UH Maunaua. He also serves on the Kalih Valley Neighborhood Board. Our fourth and final candidate for the sixth city council district is Zach Stoddart. He's a city planner and is also on the board of the Hawaii Government Employees Association and a member of the New O'wano Punch Bowl Neighborhood Board. Welcome to all of you. Thank you so much for being here. Carol, I want to start with you. What do you see is the biggest challenge to the district and how would you propose addressing it?
Well, I think the biggest challenge is the fact that each of the different regions in the district is very unique. And so as you ran through the various descriptions of the various neighborhoods, I think typically in many city council district neighborhoods, you may have a much more homogenous kind of grouping. For example, the Mililani area is pretty much, you know, a range of homes in Mililani, where many of the concerns are very unique to that area. But they don't necessarily have a very diverse flow. Whereas in District Six, we have high rises in Kakaako. You have older condos in Makiki Punch Bowl. You have single-family residential neighborhoods in Liliha or across the way in Ha'ia or in Halava Valley. So I view that as sort of one of the biggest challenges, but I think it's also one of the biggest strengths. Because each unique, each neighborhood is truly different and special. And when you get to know the people, it really is a very rewarding experience.
I want to go around the table with this one. Ikaihah, what do you think is the biggest challenge and how do you propose addressing it?
Affordability. The thing that I've heard from the residents in our district, like you're saying, council member, it is a very diverse, heterogeneous group, is a feeling that Honolulu is slipping away from us, that locals are being priced out of the place that we grew up in. And, you know, just last year, 7,000 people left Honolulu. They left Oahu because of the cost of living. And that's a number that should give us all pause. And we see it reflected in a range of statistics, in the youth unemployment. You see it on the streets in terms of homelessness. But you also see it in just the daily stresses that working, working people have in making rent, paying their mortgage, taking care of their children, taking care of their grandparents. You know, it's very, it's a very difficult time for a lot of local people.
Affordability. Tyler, what do you think is the biggest challenge and how would you address it?
Being born and raised in the district and having the opportunity to knock on doors and get to know voters from across our great district, you know, the biggest issue that I see and hear about is homelessness. And it's an issue that continues to vex our city and continues to get worse. And what I think we need to do is adopt an all-of-the-above approach on that issue. And that means implementing innovative solutions on them. And it can be wide-ranging, whether it's safe zones, Ohana zones we've talked about. And it also goes to creating more affordable housing, especially in the sort of housing-first model to get folks who are just on the verge of, you know, homelessness or, you know, losing their, their housing situation into a stable environment. That's really key. And then for the folks who've been out on the streets for a very long time, getting them to a place where they can have that stable environment and can, you know, start to better their situation. You know, we obviously have not done enough on the homeless issue. And it's, it's reflected in the fact that in our streams, in our valleys, up on our ridges, throughout our parks, we see homeless folks and we feel very sorry for them. And we need to do more. And so that's the issue that I think we need to focus on as a city in the next four years.
Zach, what do you think?
Yeah, thanks. I gotta agree that it's the cost of living as well. And that's closely tied in with homelessness. You know, I don't think our politicians are really doing enough to help out our struggling working class. The cost of living is increasing twice as fast as, as wages. 48% of Hawaii residents are struggling to make ends meet. I think part of the problem is that the influence of money in politics really shifts policy in favor of those who are able to afford to pay and donate to political campaigns. I'm the only candidate here who's running a totally clean campaign. I'm not taking any donations whatsoever. I believe that people should be able to represent themselves based on their, their votes as citizens rather than the amount of money in their pocket. And, you know, I think we see the influence of money in the policies and in the direction that our politicians are going. Not enough, not nearly enough is being done to lower the cost of living. We need to strengthen our affordable housing requirements. We need to curb real estate speculation. That's something that no other politician I know of has been talking about. And then we also need to make our taxation system a lot more progressive. We have the second highest tax rate out of any state in the whole country for low-income people at 13.4%, which is totally insane to me in a place where it's already so expensive to make it.
You know, you've all talked about affordability. And one of the things that we like to say here on Insights is that we let the viewers drive the conversation. We have people writing and calling in. What new ideas, this, this one just came in, what new ideas will you implement to help protect the public from increased attacks by the homeless who are on drugs or who are mentally ill? I mean, we have seen the point in time count. We have seen the reduction in the raw numbers of homeless folks. But, you know, I happen to live in the district of downtown and I, you know, I know that there are those folks who are very hard to reach. What new ideas do you have?
I think the thing that I am most excited about is a new partnership that we helped establish between Honolulu Police Department, Chief Ballard's new priorities are really to get more police officers on the street. You know, I think most people did not realize that up till now, many Hawaii, many Honolulu departments are actually operating at less than full capacity. So she came out publicly this year and said, "You know, we cannot afford to operate at 60% capacity when many of the issues and problems demand police officers on the beat in the neighborhoods all the time." So part of her initiative was to increase the number of police officers, provide mental health training for her officers, and have a lot more homeless outreach teams in the neighborhoods. In addition to that, the one thing that has been especially heartening is that the medical profession has really come to the rescue. And HPD and H4, which is a healthcare alliance that has been recently adopted, set up a medical clinic right in the Dan Liu Building. And within just a few months, this is between April and June, they have been open only three days a week, but they have actually seen over 400 people and have been able to help those folks kind of come into a space where they can be treated, you know, if they have mental health or other kinds of issues. These are medical professionals who can actually help them and direct them into more appropriate kind of care and treatment. So the initial responses, you know, that they have seen so far have been so overwhelmingly positive that we're now looking for additional locations where we can set up some of these kinds of clinics and assist people in getting off the street. But I think it's really the combination of HPD on one hand and physicians and mental health professionals on the other, which can help take back our streets and sidewalks.
And Tyler, you brought this up as the number one issue in the district. What new ideas do you have to address it?
Absolutely. In addition to solving our shortage of police officers, I think last month in the news, we're 250 officers short, which I think is outrageous. And, you know, our recruits keep getting poached by mainland municipalities like Oakland and Seattle. You know, we need to do a better job of providing our police force with the resources they need and also the training that they need to adequately deal with our homeless population. You know, one other area that we really need to focus on, especially for the mentally ill, is making sure that they have access to the medications that they need. You know, I really doubt that a lot of the homeless who need the sort of medication are gonna wait in line at longs to pick up their medication. We need to do a better job of meeting them where they are and making sure that they have access to not only the prescription medications, but also healthcare. You know, as you walk through downtown or Chinatown, you see so many homeless folks with, you know, infections on their legs. And it's just a really horrible situation. And, you know, with the mobile medic team and other things like that, you know, we can really start to make a difference. Instead of having them go to Queens and the $800 ambulance ride, you know, we can have a lot more cheaper interventions that actually do more to improve their quality of life and their health.
Ikaihah, we can't force these folks into care. How do we address this?
So I think what, what both of you said makes a lot of sense. We absolutely need to invest in our police officers. But what we're, you know, so there's a recent longitudinal study by, I think it was by Harvard, that, that said that the people that are on the street who are exhibiting signs of mental illness and who end up in drug abuse situations, they actually became homeless because of economic circumstances. And what that signals for me is that we actually, you know, we need to, we need to solve the symptomatic expression of homelessness. But we also need to very aggressively work to, work to address the core economic problem, which is that housing is just far too expensive here. And there's, you know, there's the people that are currently houseless. And there's a recent study that said that the, there's a clear correlation between domestic violence and homelessness, that it's women fleeing abusive families that end up on the street and because of the high cost of living, can't find their own place to live. But we, you know, so there's, we need to address that, that root problem.
Well, Zach, I know you brought that up as well. And before we let you answer that, we just want to play a little sound tonight. Over six weeks here right on Insights, we featured residents from across the state talking about the issues that are affecting them on their individual islands. The issue cited by Oahu residents was the lack of affordable housing and the increase in vacation rentals, particularly illegal ones. Here's a quick sample of what they had to say.
But the reality is, we know that we need at least 25,000 more units by 2035. We're short that much. And we want to make that-- short that much, and we want to make that many. We have more illegal short-term rentals right now than that number operating in the state.
It's ruining neighborhoods with the noise. I mean, if people are vacationing, living next to you, they're having parties and inviting all their friends and weddings.
Yeah, yeah, they don't care.
And making noise. And I think, I blame our government for not looking at it straightforward. They just bumble around and don't do anything about identifying where the illegals are and enforcing it.
Okay, Zach, what do you think? The vacation rental issue has been around for a while now. It only seems to be getting worse. What's your plan to fix it and how does that tie into the affordable housing equation?
Oh, yeah, that's a huge part of it. And, you know, I don't think City Council has really done enough at all to curb this problem. And my understanding is that the Department of Planning and Permitting has proposed a solution whereby transient vacation units, these Airbnb houses, will be given a certificate in order to operate legally. And if they don't have that certificate on their advertisement, they can be shut down. I think that's an effective way to address this issue, which really takes tens of thousands of long-term housing units off the market for regular Hawaii residents. You know, other issues I think that are going to be able to reduce the cost of living, we have some pretty, I want to say weak, you know, there is an affordable housing bill that recently passed City Council, and it's a good start, but I'm going to say it's a little too weak. Basically, they've required 5% of all new housing developments to be affordable. And what's affordable is not always truly affordable, you know. It stretches to people who are making up to six-figure incomes. And I think that's a part of the problem. We need to strengthen that affordable housing requirement to 15 or 20% like it is in a lot of other cities. We need to make sure affordable is truly defined as affordable. And then also, yeah, addressing this transient vacation unit issue and, you know, allowing people to operate bed and breakfast if they're living in the house and renting out rooms in order to pay for their mortgage. I think that's acceptable, but, you know, taking housing off the market for regular everyday folks is part of the reason why costs are being driven up so high.
I mean, you heard Denby Fawcett saying there, "The government is failing us." What is government doing to help get this issue under control?
Well, I would say from the City Council end, we have been pushing Department of Planning and Permitting very hard, and we've been very frustrated with the lack of enforcement. I, you know, totally agree that in many instances, the illegal vacation rentals are a product of a lack of enforcement. And so to me, one of the things, that's something that we have to tackle. However, one good thing that happened this year was that many residents from around the island, and I know Tyler has been very active in this issue also, is began to work with the City Council directly on the issue of monster homes. And these are instances of potentially could be illegal vacation rentals where properties in older, single-family neighborhoods are being sold, they're being either renovated or they're being torn down. And the way that the structures that are being built on them are being developed, they're exploiting loose regulatory frameworks that the city has so that the structures that are being developed are actually the equivalent of apartment buildings in single-family neighborhoods. And so the positive thing was that this year, we had more than ever individual residents contacting us all throughout Oahu, whether it's Kaemuki, Kapahulu. In my district, it's been Kalih Valley, in Liliha, Kam Heights, Aia, Halava Heights, in Pacific Heights. And so what we have found is that the enforcement level has been so low that there wasn't really any true enforcement being done. So the council passed a moratorium on the issuance of any further building permits. And to ensure that we provide adequate enforcement tools, the City Council increased the staffing and the resources for the department. And we also have another bill which would instill new penalties to roll back to periods before the moratorium is passed if we find that different contractors are actually flaunting, you know, the city's regulatory laws. Like, for example, I know that HCIA has been very active in reporting contractors to HIAOSH, to Department of Health. And we have a number of instances where we said, you know, "If these contractors are really exploiting loopholes, shouldn't we require the structures to be demolished or torn down?" And so far, we can't seem to get the department to move one way or the another. So we've provided the resources. I think now it's a concerted community effort to ensure that we enforce the laws we have. And if they're not strong enough, we actually need to increase the penalties.
Tyler, what's your take on that? Chad's writing in, "What's your solution to monster homes?" I mean, on the one hand, we have a need for more housing. So the idea of having apartment buildings popping up is not necessarily a bad thing, but nobody wants one necessarily in a small residential neighborhood.
So, you know, the issue here with both the transient vacation rentals and the monster home issue is, you know, what's appropriate and what sort of buildings do we want in our residential communities? You know, a single-family neighborhood with limited parking, aging infrastructure, you know, obviously will be strained with 20 bedrooms or more in a home and, you know, 20 vehicles coming in and out all day long, whether it's from residents of the monster home or, you know, people vacationing in our neighborhoods. It does come down to enforcement. And, you know, the city does need to be much more aggressive in not only going after the people who own these buildings, but also those who are kind of enabling them. There's a whole network of realtors and contractors and architects and engineers that throughout this island are building these monster homes and, you know, selling them for profit and using it to bring cash from elsewhere to, you know, take their money here into the United States. That's an issue we really need to be focused in on. In addition, you know, there's, in addition to the zoning issues, there's also labor issues, insurance issues, you know, building code and fire safety issues. And we need to get all of these departments together in one room. And that's why I've been talking about an interagency task force for a very long time to bring all of these regulatory agencies together. So they're not tackling the monster home issue in a disjointed way, but can really coordinate their efforts. And we can hopefully stop the proliferation of monster homes before they even get their permits and even start, you know, getting underway.
What do you think of that idea of tearing them down retroactively?
Absolutely. You know, we need to show that there are penalties and that if you break the law willingly, you know, you will get caught. And, you know, we can't let this slide. And I think our city has let a lot of things slide for a very long time. We need to be very firm in this area because it is very disruptive to our neighborhoods to have this proliferation of both monster homes and vacation rentals.
Nikaike, what's your take on that? Do you think they should be torn down?
I think that the enforcement is very important, both for the TBR issue as well as for monster homes. I think, though, that the monster home is a symptom of a greater problem, which is that people need housing. And I think we need to start thinking about, you know, if we agree that monster homes are bad, what are the good homes that we want? Where do we want housing to be built with the appropriate density? How do we shift the development energy that we're experiencing in Liliha or Paua or Kalih Valley and put that where it belongs, in the heart of our city? You know, and I think that's incumbent on all of us to find some real solutions for the long-term growth of our island, the long-term development of our community.
We don't necessarily want to ask each of you all the same question, but on this one, I think we do want to get your position. We've had a number of questions tonight about rail. So just briefly, if you could tell us, Zach, we'll start with you. What's your position on rail and how are we going to pay for this?
Sure, yeah. I think that rail, at the point that it's at, needs to be completed. I'm in favor of it. And I think it presents a really good opportunity to provide affordable housing, truly affordable housing, in our urban core and along the rail corridor near rail stations. And that goes back to the affordable housing requirement. If only 5% of the developments in those areas are going to be affordable and not actually truly affordable, then we're going to have some problems for the long term, for decades and decades to come. So I think we need stronger affordable housing requirements in order to make sure that those areas, that those transit-oriented development areas are really going to house people who need housing and make sure that they have accessibility, make sure that there's a smart design to the city there that is going to be more efficient and allow for multimodal transportation, walking, biking. So, yeah, I have support of it. I think it presents a really good opportunity, and I'm looking forward to seeing the city realize that.
Tyler, how are we going to pay for rail? Do you support the initiative?
Yeah, absolutely. As someone who takes the bus and rides my bike, you know, I'm a big believer in public transportation. So that's why I think we need to complete the project, not only to Alamoana, but also to the University of Hawaii at Manoa. You know, I think there's two areas where we need to really dive in and control the costs. And, you know, my background's in the construction industry, so if I'm elected, I look forward to asking the tough questions to the contractors, you know, and examining the change orders and asking our engineers, you know, "Why are we doing it this way or that way?" And so, you know, with the upcoming City Center Guideway and Stations package, I think there are opportunities through a public-private partnership to minimize the financial risks to the city. And I think there are also opportunities to minimize the amount that the city has to commit to operations and maintenance. One other area there that I think the cities failed to do thus far is to adopt the model that many cities in the continental U.S. and Canada have done, where, you know, we say that the existing tax base does not have to pay for it, and the new developments going in around the rail stations end up doing that. We need to set up the legal structure in order to capture that added value. On the mainland, you know, they call it the Tax Increment Financing District, but really that's a way of capturing the added value from the new districts and putting that into a lockbox and using that for operations maintenance rather than asking our existing tax base to foot the bill moving forward.
Right. I mean, so much of the focus has been on cost of just the infrastructure itself, but when we look at the operations as well, we are going to be operating at a deficit, at least if the numbers are correct.
Yeah. And there's still no firm plan for how we're going to pay for operations and maintenance. And so that's why I think it's going to be incumbent upon the next set of City Council members to figure that out and really to dive deep and make sure that the plan that we do eventually adopt is one that's sound and can carry us forward.
Nikaike, do you support this project? And where's the money going to come from now and later?
So I agree with most of our residents that rail, up to this point, has been, and it's very frustrating, we're very close to actually, you know, economic and design failure with rail. With that said, I do support public transportation. And what I would like to see us do is to change our strategy as we approach the city center area. I'd like us to go directly to the university on a Maoka elevation.
So actually change the course of the line?
Change the course, exactly. Part of it is that climate change is actually a very real thing. And we're building a system that needs to last for decades, right? We're spending a lot of money on it. It should last a long time. But climate change is around the corner. Sea level rise is around the corner. And the area that rail is currently being designed and constructed, or, you know, where they want to construct it in, a handful of the stations are within what the scientists are calling the sea level rise exposure area, SLOREXSA.
I mean, what you're proposing could cost even billions more than we're already setting.
Actually, no. No, no, no. So what I'm proposing, and there is materials on my website, which you can look at, is to go underground. And I actually think it's cheaper in the long run. Because when we're talking about building through Honolulu, we all remember how bad it was in Pearl City and in Aia and Waipahu, the inconveniences to our community, to all of our business owners. Just think about that in Honolulu, in the urban center, the impact that it's going to have on our ability to drop off the kids at school, to go to the grocery store, all of the things that we're used to doing are going to be much more inconvenient with the elevated guideway being built. Not to mention the fact that we know that within the next several decades, we're going to have to raise the level of the roadways in Kakaako. So it doesn't make sense to invest $10 billion, let's say $9 billion, in an area which we know is going to be underwater.
Carol, what's your take on that? Do you think that we should go underground? And then also generally, what is your take on rail? And how are we going to be able to afford this both now and in the future?
Well, that's a great question because at this point, you know, the rail transit agency is finally pursuing some of the public-private partnerships that some of us on the council have been advocating for over two years. You know, I think the Tax Increment Financing way of distributing some of the costs, that's one approach. We have also urged that we use existing laws which would allow the city to establish community facilities, districts in which the property owners in the areas adjacent to the routes would pay a higher property tax to help cover some of the costs of both infrastructure as well as long-term redevelopment. But the property owners would also benefit if they are able to develop in ways that they couldn't develop currently. You know, one of the things that they did in San Francisco when they developed the new transBay Center is they looked for ways to increase the amount of affordable housing, low-income housing. They also created a great, a new design for a park that could be enjoyed, you know, by the residents and visitors in that area. So I think there's a lot of different partnerships that we haven't fully explored, and I'm glad that the Hart Board is now exploring that. That being said, however, I do think that we have to be creative in looking at perhaps a wider range of alternatives if it turns out that the climate change report, which we're expecting to receive this year, shows that there may be more risky hazards that we haven't really factored into the equation. And so if rail is going to proceed, you know, I support rail, I think we all have to take a closer look at how to make it work and how to make it sustainable.
We're talking about big budget items here, but a lot of what the City Council does is really stuff that affects us on a day-to-day, something like trash pickup, right? We want our trash picked up on time, and we don't want so many potholes in our roads. So do you believe that residents should pay a specific fee for trash pickup? And what about a bulky item fee? I know this is something that people have been talking about for a while now.
Well, on the question of fees for trash collections, I can tell you that that one issue has probably generated more opposition calls than any other issue that we've dealt with. And part of the reason is that I represent an area where we have a lot of illegal dumping that is already occurring. So if you talk to residents on Makiki Tantalus, you talk to residents in the back of Kalih Valley, Liliha, and other areas, many residents are concerned is we establish fees for trash collections, more illegal dumping will occur. If you could tell people that this would not happen and that services would actually get better, maybe there's a chance for us to consider something like this. But I think that's going to take a lot more coordination with both the union employees that are involved, departments, and maybe coming up with creative ways to stretch, you know, our dollars and make services better while looking at whether or not fees would be an appropriate way to go.
I mean, we are already paying for this in essence, right? These are our tax sellers covering the service. It's a matter of adding that extra.
So I think there's actually an interesting market opportunity when we're talking about bulky items. And I think we should take a page from the way that we handle recyclables, you know, the five-cent redemption. Is it still five cents? Anyways.
I believe so.
My wife is going to get very mad in front of that, knowing that the size is all on. But imagine if we were to take a fee, but tack it on at the time of purchase. And you allow that fee to be redeemed by the person who's piling using their mattress, piling using their refrigerator. They can take it to a designated redemption facility, or they can leave it on the side of the road, and someone can go pick it up, someone who's an entrepreneur.
I don't know. You're talking about something that could be pretty chaotic if everyone's leaving their mattress on the road because they don't want to collect that five bucks.
I would say it's very chaotic now, right? The mattresses are on the side of the road now, but there's no market incentive for someone to go and deal with that mattress. So I say, you create the opportunity for the enterprising young guy or gal who has a pickup truck, they want to make 20 bucks, 100 bucks, they can go and do it themselves. And, but, you know, there will still be mattresses left on the side of the road. And we need to make sure that our men and women who work in those union jobs to take those mattresses can go and do so as well.
Tyler, what do you think? Should we be charging for trash pickup?
This is a short answer. I'm opposed to nickeling and diming our residents for things that the city already does and should be doing in a more efficient way. And so, you know, when this was proposed, you know, I looked around in the community and looked at the trash pile, the illegal dumping pile across from my parents' house in Leva Heights. I said, you know, "These people, there's no way they're going to pay a fee, and we're still going to have their pile there." So I'm against this proposal for fees.
Zach, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm actually open to the idea. You know, I understand there's issues with people dumping their trash. But, you know, pay-as-you-throw systems have been proven to reduce waste by as much as 50%. We live on a small island with limited resources in a very sensitive environment. I think that's worth looking into, especially if we can deal with the illegal dumping issue. I also want to make sure that we keep recycling, encourage people to recycle, reduce, reuse, recycle, in that order. And then, you know, I'd also look into organic composting model like they did in Portland, Maine. They have one where it's basically you pay in 15 bucks, totally optional if you want to, and you leave your organic waste out, your food waste out. And then, if you want, you can actually ask for organic compost to be brought and dropped off at your door. So I think in terms of, in terms of waste reduction and disposing of what we have, I think that's, we got to start thinking outside of the box and making sure that we're keeping our island clean, we're keeping our island waste-free.
Well, on that issue, we have someone writing in asking, "What are we going to do about stopping plastic pollution?" asking, what are we going to do about stopping plastic pollution from getting into our oceans? Of course, this month, we have the bag fee in effect now, so you've got to pay every time you go to the grocery store. What new ideas do we have? We do live on an island, as he did say, and we do have limited resources when it comes to all the opala that we're creating. So what can we be doing to be better environmental stewards?
I think there's a lot of different ways that we might be able to go forward. You know, Kupu Hawaii and groups like Sustainable Coastlines and Surf Rider Foundation have been leading different kinds of marine debris pickups and cleanups. And what we're finding is if we provide incentives, sort of along the lines of what Ikaika talked about, you know, for some of the organizations to be able to receive grants or funding as part of these kinds of efforts. We think it will get everyone a lot more involved in taking care of the debris that is washing up on our coastline, as well as really instilling a sense of stewardship. We kind of did propose a number of bills this past year to develop that idea further, but I know Department of Environmental Services asked us to wait until they finish their solid waste master plan update and then see how we might integrate these into some of their new services.
This hook, this person's writing in about our water lines and sewer system. On average, we have one water main break a day in our city, and if it happens in your neighborhood, it's a big traffic mess or even more. Can you talk about, Ikaika, let's ask this to you. What should we do to fix our water lines and sewer system that are in such disrepair?
Real quick, I think we should just say no, actually, to the, to the single-use plastics and a styrofoam ban. It's okay for us to just say no to some things, but I appreciate your endorsement.
So the sewer lines and the water lines?
Our island needs a massive overhaul, you know, especially when you think about the environmental changes that we know that are coming. I think that in the process of rethinking our rail strategy, it's an opportunity for us to go through and do a massive reinvestment in our core infrastructure, in our sewers, in undergrounding the lines, all of our electrical and utility lines, and paying for it through what's called a climate bond. It's another fancy term like TIF, a climate bond. You know, it's monies that are set aside specifically and that we would raise specifically for the cost of adapting to climate change. And we know we have to do it.
Tyler, you're in the construction business. How would we, how do we address this right now, the water and sewer issues that we face?
You know, absolutely. You know, there's sort of three core city functions, our roads, our sewers, and our waters. And it seems very often that when we go in and improve one of those, the other two sort of get forgotten about. A few months later, we come in and, you know, after repaving the roads real nice, come in and dig it up again to do sewer or water improvement. So I think there's definitely a need for more coordination in that regard, and I think there's opportunities for cost savings there. You know, in our older neighborhoods, like the one I grew up in, you know, we definitely have issues with our aging infrastructure. And so we need to be much more thoughtful about prioritizing the areas that are in sort of the most disrepair, doing a sort of triage. You know, there's a lot of older lines that are sufficient and, you know, have the capacity. There's other areas that clearly don't. And, you know, it seems that very often, you know, we, the city, again, pave something or puts in a water line, and a few months or years later, you know, it seems like they do it again. And, you know, people have lots of questions about that. So again, it comes really down to the way we plan it. And then also, when it comes down to paying for it, you know, we need to be very thoughtful about, you know, making sure that when we go in and do the planning, that the, you know, bonds we issue to pay for it are done right. We're in an environment where interest rates are going up, so we definitely have to be very thoughtful about, you know, not overextending our city's financial resources.
Zach, you talked about affordable housing. A lot of people are looking to Kaka'ako. We're seeing a lot of high rises go up there. At what point is enough enough? Would development in Kaka'ako be curtailed in any way?
No, I think our development, we need to make sure that we're developing, using smart growth practices. I think as a city planner, I understand that development needs to be contained within the urban core of Honolulu and then along that rail corridor as well. If we continue to let developers, who are essentially running the show in a lot of ways, I think, out here, if we continue to let developers build out into our ag lands, into our preservation lands, into the countryside, I think it's environmentally disastrous. It's contributing to urban sprawl, which is why we have traffic problems. It's bad for the quality of life of our people. And so, yeah, I think we do need to focus affordable housing efforts in the urban core, places like Kaka'ako and Alamoana. And a part of the problem is that you'll see these luxury high rises go up and there's no affordable housing around, you know. You'll see homeless people on the streets, right across the street from a luxury high-rise development that's brand new. And I think a lot of that is because, you know, our politicians are influenced by the money that comes from these developers and the people that have a lot to gain from, from these developments. And then, you know, a lot of times, what will happen is with the affordable housing rule that we have in place, developers are allowed to build their affordable units, affordable units, in a different part of town. And I think that's hugely problematic because if you have all affordable housing in Kalih, Iwale, I think you're going to create a society that's socially stratified, divided by class, and that's lasting, that's going to last for decades to come.
You know, I'd like to jump in on that one because I think there are also examples of, you know, quality developers who are looking to develop affordable housing in the urban core, not just, you know, in the outline areas. And one example I would bring to the table is Samku, who, Samku Hawaii, which has built a very unique development in which they have placed a whole tower that is right in the middle of the Kapialani, Alamoana, you know, most heavily congested area. But they've utilized state financing tools, you know, which are known as 201H exemption. So they're not really asking for higher density or, you know, large incentives from city zoning agencies. But they're actually using state financing tools to sort of eliminate certain kinds of additional costs. And by doing so, they're able to offer 60% of their 450 units as affordable, within the range of what many of the workforce residents are looking for. So, you know, I think we should be providing incentives and opportunities for developers like Samku Hawaii, who are interested in building a quality product for Hawaii residents. They said that their first tower was so successful, they sold out within the first, I think they sold out in probably the first three days or so. And so they are now looking to develop a second tower in that same Alamoana-Kapialani corridor, and they are going to be going forward with the same mix. And so, you know, we should encourage these kinds of developments in which you actually have developers that are developing for the local market to try and really help bring a lot more affordable housing into our housing inventory.
I mean, you do make a good point in that we need these developers. We need somebody to build the housing. You know, a lot of times, we see developers being cast as, you know, the big bad wolf, but somebody's got to build the building. How do we foster the kind of development that she's talking about?
Yeah, we totally can. And a lot of other cities do this as well, where they have requirements of, you know, 15, 20% of all your units have to be made affordable. And that works, you know, and it's possible, it's doable.
Tyler, is that realistic, 15 to 20%?
You know, this is an area that I've been working on for the past several years at the legislature. I've been a very strong advocate for the creation of more affordable housing. In fact, two of the largest affordable housing-related bills that were passed by the legislature this year and the previous year were bills that I worked on. And what they did was they expanded the incentives, tax incentives for creating affordable rentals, which is clearly a product that we need. You know, as Zach mentioned, there's a lot of luxury development, it's all for sale. But the big puka that we have in the local market is rentals. We have people who, you know, are doubled up or tripled up in homes and would love to have somewhere that they can afford. And so I'm very proud of my work in expanding that. The bill that was recently passed, the Omnibus Housing Bill by the legislature, the rental incentives in there are such that 291,000 local families will qualify for units, if only we can go ahead and build them. Part of the challenge is that our regulatory structure is very difficult. There's lots of hoops to go through in order to build a building. And, you know, as we know, Kaka'ako is regulated by the state. I happen to live in Kaka'ako in a workforce tower, and I know how difficult it was to get that building built. And so moving forward, you know, I think we're going to need a comprehensive plan for the urban core to make sure that, you know, on one side of the street, which is under city control, it doesn't have a different set of rules from the other side of the street, which is under state control. And so, you know, I think we're going to have to have this conversation in the next several years about how we make our development in the urban core make a lot more sense and, you know, make sure that, as Zach mentioned, you know, we do have, you know, better standards for, you know, what's affordable and who can qualify. But at the end of the day, it comes down to more incentives so that projects can pencil out and actually can get built.
We only have about five minutes. I've had a lot of, heard a lot of consensus tonight from all of you. Chad's writing in tonight. This might be our last question, so if you could keep your response to about a minute, about wanting to know what are your differences? So Ikaika, let's start with you. What would you do differently than you've seen the councilwoman do so far?
So, you know, I think actually that you, councilmember Fukunaga, have done a wonderful job, actually. You know, you're someone that I think that a lot of us can trust. Don't interpret that as an endorsement, though. But, you know, I would definitely vote differently on, on things like the property tax exemption for military service people. I would vote differently than your votes on the styrofoam and plastic ban, the single-use plastics. And I think that with all due respect, my primary concern is the, is, you know, who are these buildings for? Who is Hawaii for? And, and I feel like we haven't been doing enough, frankly, to advocate on behalf of our, our working families.
Zach, what about you? What makes you different than the councilwoman?
Well, the styrofoam ban bill also would be something that I'd bring up. That's actually the main reason I decided to run against the councilwoman. She single-handedly killed the bill to ban styrofoam takeout containers here on Oahu, which is a common sense bill that's been passed on other islands. And, you know, it's a petroleum product that the federal government has labeled as, you know, a likely carcinogen. So it's surprising that that bill didn't pass. But in other senses, I also think that I'm, in this race, the candidate who's strongest in terms of affordable housing and truly, truly doing things to help out the working class, who politicians at the state level and at the city level here haven't done nearly enough. And, you know, in terms of strengthening our affordable housing requirements, I'm less in favor of incentives and handouts to developers than my opponents. I think requirements are just as effective and don't cost taxpayers money who are already stretched out quite a bit.
Okay, we're going to have to leave it there so that everyone gets a chance. Tyler, what would you, how would you govern differently?
Well, you know, my campaign's been all about energy, vision, and aloha, and I think that energy part is really key. You know, our city, I was born and raised in the district, and I've seen our issues that we face, cost of housing, homelessness, crime, just continue to get worse or continue to just sort of stagnate. And I think we need leadership that's going to take action on these issues and really, you know, really get things done. You know, one of the issues that, you know, we face is affordable housing. And I think I've demonstrated through my work at the Construction Alliance on affordable housing incentives, on a number of issues going after monster homes, that we have been effective on the private sector side, and I'd love to bring that to the public sector to help our community members throughout our district.
Councilwoman, you've heard the criticisms. Why should you keep your job?
Well, I think the thing that is important most of all in District 6 is that the people know that they have someone who's going to fight for them to protect their neighborhoods, especially when there's issues that arise that may be very divisive. Now, I will speak very briefly on the polystyrene ban. There are a number of fast food or small business operators for whom switching may not be a viable option at this point. So we're looking for compromises. We want everybody to be able to survive. You know, we're all for having less plastics in the ocean, but at the same time, you want to have the small businesses be able to survive as well. Secondly, I think when you look at the importance of the council being a check and balance on the administration, it is important to have an independent voice where we ask questions. We don't always agree with the administration, especially on things like transit funding, when we know that the people who are most concerned are our elderly residents, they're our voters, and our constituents, for whom we are really the last stop. So I think, you know, in many ways, while we may not always agree with the administration, we always look for ways that we can work together to solve a particular problem.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Mahalo for all of you for being here tonight. We thank our guests, city councilwoman Carol Fukunaga, Ikaika Hasi, Tyler Dos Santos Tam, and Zach Stoddard. Next week, right here on Insights, our focus will shift to the neighbor islands. Two counties, Kauai and Maui, will elect new mayors for the first time in 10 and eight years respectively. From 8:00 to 9:00 p.m., we'll feature three of the candidates running for mayor of Maui County. Councilmembers Elle Cochrane and Don Guzman, along with former councilmember Mike Victorino, will be joining us live in studio. Then from 9:00 to 10:00, four candidates for the Kauai mayor will join us. They are councilmembers Derek Kawakami, Joanne Yukimura, and Mel Rapoza, along with County Parks Director Leonard Rapoza. Please join us for what should be a very lively night. Thank you so much for participating in our show tonight. I'm Yanji Denise for Insights on PBS Hawaii. Until next time, ahui ho.